Good morning, welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners workshop for December twelfth, two thousand point three. We've got several presentations today. The first is discuss the draft of the two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan update. Director of Planning and Development Chad Jacobs will address. Good morning, sir, welcome.
Morning. So we're at the culmination of about a year's worth of work here. If you'll remember, we did a kickoff for the comprehensive plan back in November of last year. Since then, we've gone through the process of doing three steering committee meetings, three technical advisory committee meetings, a number of stakeholder interviews, public survey, two public visioning sessions. And that has culminated to the draft document that you all have before you, both this morning and what will also be presented this evening in the final public hearing, so that way we can gather additional public input and then go back and whatever's necessary to do a little, some tweaks and then send it off to the RDC and to DCA. With that, I do have the, our consultant here who's been a pleasure to work with GMC, we have Glenn Coyne and Keanu Johnson, so I do want to thank them. This has been a long process, a long journey that we're at the, at the tail end of this, and so we're very, very close. We have to have this adopted by February of this upcoming year, so we are getting down to it. And with that, they have a presentation that they have for you and we'll be able to answer some questions for you if you have any. So with that, I would like to turn it over to GMC.
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having us, Chad. Thanks for the introduction. Again, we'll be brief this morning. The idea is to give you a preview of our presentation for this evening. And again, for the, for tonight, we'll go through it in a little more detail for the public, but just to give you a preview of that, we'll talk a little bit about what Chad just mentioned, the process that we went through and summarize our public involvement and then let you know how the plan is set up to be implemented. So just looking at our schedule, again, we have a public hearing tonight. We provided a draft, which I think you've seen a copy of already. It's a pretty extensive document. I'm sure you haven't read the whole thing yet, but we had that ready last week and that will be open for public review through the month of, of January. And then we have to submit this to the Department of Community Affairs at the state. They have a forty day review period that they look at it, make sure it's consistent with a surrounding areas plans and then the, the rules that are set up to follow for comp plans. And that doesn't usually take forty days, but they allow that amount of time. And then your deadline to adopt this plan will be the end of February. So we should have plenty of time through January and February for that review, so that you can get it adopted on time. And so again, why do we do this? This is really important to look at your future. We look at both short term and long term growth for the city of Griffin and we do that going through a planning process that you see on the screen. We devise what the vision of the community should be, how goals and objectives are written to address that vision. And then where it really comes down to it is the community work program. That's the implementation. What steps are you going to take in the future to bring this plan about? So that's the best way to, to explain that. But with that, I'm going to ask Kalanis to come up and talk a little bit about our public involvement process. And before he does, we did not necessarily coordinate our jackets today. It just happened that way, so.
Thank you, Glenn. Good morning. Again, good to see everybody. And as Glenn mentioned, it's been a pleasure working here with this particular effort and so before it is getting adopted. But briefly, public involvement, as you see, there are seven items on the screen we've had and Chad mentioned a few of these. We had the public visiting open houses. A lot of you on the audience were there, June first and June eighth. We had stakeholder interviews. I think four or five of you on the, you days we actually interviewed, I think, is quite some good information. Thank you for that. There was a survey, online survey for those who were not able to come out in person. We had, right at one hundred and seventy-five respondents. We had a technical advisory committee meeting and steering committee meetings, three of each, and we helped those provide some good detailed information as well. There was a project website. We had frequent updates on your city website. And obviously, public hearings that are required and one will be actually not. Just a brief summary over the themes that we heard throughout the public involvement process. Overall, there were three items that we heard and I told Chad in the beginning that we wanted to hear the same theme from different sources. And if we do that, we don't be doing the right, the right thing for this effort. Housing, I mean, when we got started, we knew housing would be an issue of major concern and it was, whether it was online survey, whether it was stakeholder interviews or public meetings, housing elements of housing ranked high. We also, transportation traffic, particularly traffic due to downtown Griffin area, also ranked pretty high. Economic development, getting more small businesses, more choices, better quality of choices here, also ranked high. Now, the next item, the next image is specific to the online survey. They, the ones that took that mentioned small town character. We mentioned the affordability of property and homes. And another, I guess, the property region delivered in the city proximity to family and friends. So to show you a dis- summation of what we've gathered from the online survey. A little bit about the overall planning process. Glenn mentioned this, but again, sort of very, we always use the term inverted funnel and that's kind of what the graphic is, but it's part very broad, getting needs and issues and you know, what do you, what are issues with traffic, whether it's green space, I was part very broad, get grabbing this data. We use that data to start preliminary goals, objectives, and put together some action items, which will be in that work plan. Community work program is which we're looking at now, the short term, years one through five, long term, year sixteen, twenty. All that together helps us, you know, put what we call the draft comprehensive plan. And so again, the graphic kind of shows and there's like a little word graphic there, a lot of the comments and all that we heard, you see housing in downtown sticking out because again, we heard that several times with several different sources. Next, I want Glenn to come up, I guess, and finish talking a little bit about the comprehensive plan organization and the chapters and what's next for you.
Thank you, sir. So all this information that we got, we put together into the draft that you see before you. There, it will be all formatted in a real nice, nice format when we get ready and done, but there's just, there's the seven chapters that we have put together and it just gives everybody a chance to go to the particular chapter that they have an interest in. So we begin with the introduction. We talk a lot about data and background and existing conditions. We do summarize all the community engagement, a lot more detail than we talked about today. And then identify your needs and issues, a community vision, which leads to that work program with those three pieces, report of accomplishments, what did you do since the last plan? What do you plan to do short term? And then what do you plan to do long term? And then we do have a lot of appendix material, which documents all of the public involvement for the most part, sign in sheets, the exercises that we did, all, all that. So if somebody wants to say, you know, show us what you guys did at these public meetings, it'll be there in the appendix. Again, running through the schedule, we kind of talked about this already, but you know, we did start this effort back in November and we got started late and, and we really picked up steam, I think, and got it, got it done. We hit every benchmark that we needed to hit to, to get the schedule. So we kind of talked about this already, but we just wanted to document it for the public tonight. So one of the biggest pieces of the plan is a map. It's called a character area map. And it's not a parcel by parcel land use map that you might think about, or a zoning map that you would use in a zoning hearing, but it's setting up a series of character areas so that each one of them has a unique set of attributes within that area. So you can see that there's some that focus on housing, some that focus on mixed use, some that focus on commercial areas. But it's very detailed and this chapter is probably one of the most important in the plan because it lays out what happens within each of these character areas. So we would encourage people to take, take the time to look through that and, and learn about all the different recommendations in the character areas. So again, it's great to have a plan. It's wonderful to do all this and ask people what they think and put together a big report, but unless you set up ways for it to be implemented, it's, it's not going to happen. So we spent a lot of time talking about what are the action steps that really make this plan feasible? And so the idea is that we've used this phrase many times, community work program. That's what we like to call it. And it really does lay out in a friendly, user-friendly table, steps, who's involved? And where's, where's the money coming from, most importantly? So I just want to show you an example of what that looks like. If it came from the previous plan, that shows up in that second column, that means it's been carried forward. It wasn't, for whatever reason, it wasn't finished in the last five years. So it's carried forward, want to document that. But the idea is, what is the activity? What's the project? Who's responsible for it? What year are you generally going to try to attack that? You can't do everything in the first year. We can't put everything off till the fifth year. So we tried very carefully to look at budgets and figure out how we can spread things out over those five years. Which department is responsible? Who's helping them? We were the partners. And we do have some cost estimates for items in there that, that are relative to, to projects. And then we do try to identify where those funding sources are. Is this general fund? Is it grant money? Is it SPOS? Where's, where's the source of that money coming? So you can use this throughout the year and figure out what year are we in? How are we budgeting this year? And what projects are we supposed to be looking at? And use that as a guide as you go forward. So that's the intent of that community work program. So again, we went through it kind of quickly. Again, there's a lot more detail in the document. We're happy to try to answer questions for you now, but again, tonight, we hope to give the public a little bit of a flavor for what's been going on with the planning process. Again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you and, and to, and get this project to the end.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? We appreciate GMC's assistance in this program and we're blessed in a way that state did allow us because of the tornado to delay our comp plan submission to move that on track. We do appreciate your service and see you this evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chad. Item two is discuss proposal, proposed revisions to the Sea Griffin customer service policy. Customer Service Manager Rita Bagwell will address. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have the privilege of presenting to all of you the proposed changes to the customer service policy. I'm confident that the, that the reviews, revisions we have proposed make the document clear, precise, and bear to our customers that we serve. Twenty twenty-three goals. On January twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the city staff met to establish the yearly goals for departments and the citywide staff. The tornadoes in January impressed upon us, the importance of assuring our policies and procedures were efficient during normal operations and during emergency response. The staff goal was to inventory and review internal policies and procedures. And the electric department goal, one of those was to update the customer service policy. The current customer service policy was adopted August the ninth, two thousand sixteen. At the time, it was a policy that was an improvement of its last revision. However, over the years, we discovered the policy did contain its own challenges. It was difficult to navigate. There were no section numbers, lacked consistent organization and et cetera. There were definitions that created confusion for our customers and staff. There were outdated procedures that no longer reflected current operating procedure. It did not reflect all of the courtesy options available to our customers. And the policy set restrictions on how often customer courtesy options could be utilized by our customers. The proposed revisions are intended to provide clarity and ensure the policy reflects current operations of the city's customer service department. The purpose and objective of the customer service policy is to establish procedures governing the relationship between the city and its utility customers. Some administrative changes that we are proposing are adding the city's mission statement to the policy. Adding section numbers to make the policy easier to read and follow. Refer to, reorganize the content of the policy, starting where we're located, our hours of operation. Signing up the service, what you need, the deposit information, meter reading, billing, payments, collections, disputes. It now flows and makes sense. We removed unnecessary sections specific to Griffin power operations. That information is located in the SOP for Griffin Power. It was not necessary to be in the customer service policy. We simplified terms, made clear definitions. We corrected the list of payment options as they've changed over the past seven years drastically. We renamed the payment due reminder to disconnect notice. Payment due reminder is acts as a suggestion of when your services can be subject for disconnection. Disconnect notice is a sense of urgency. And we added an exception to the policy if emergency procedures in effect per code. That was added per our experiences that we've had through the tornado and code. Definitions, we added, removed and amended definitions for policy terms. New and amended definitions, definitions include, but are not limited to grace period, late payment, penalty, deposit for initial new and additional and delinquent. Under section five point seven, blanket service contracts has been recommended to be proposed to be added to the policy. This allows customers who own or manage five or more properties to become a default customer. So the city can transfer a service into that customer's name in the event the tenant moves out. So the service does not ever start, have interruption. A resolution approving the form for the blanket service contract is on the agenda this evening for the board's consideration. Section six point three, additional deposits. Expanded the use of an additional deposit allows the city to request additional deposits for subject, for customers who are subject for disconnection two or more times in a twelve month period. The current policy only allowed additional deposits if the service was disconnected two times rather than subject for disconnection. This also will allow assist with issues at multifamily properties, especially those who have a master meter. In an effort to assist our customers who may be experiencing financial difficulties, section nine, payment arrangements has been added. We are proposing to formally adopt a policy for payment arrangements. Section nine allows customers to pay half of their account balance and arrange to pay the remaining debt in, in installments. This make, this courtesy may be used once every six months. This would prevent disconnection for non-payment, however, customers are still considered delinquent if the balance is not paid in full before the due date. And a penalty of ten percent would still be applicable.
Okay, so if, if a customer pays half of their bill
Right.
and the rest of it is divided for six months, will we automatically buy, um, buy at that six months incrementally on their bills?
The remaining balance is not spread out over six months. It's typically within the next two to three weeks. Because they'll have a current bill after that. They're just privy to a payment arrangement once every six months.
Oh, okay.
Section seven point four, clarify on policy for service restoration. If disconnected for non-payment, if disconnected for non-payment, payment must be paid via cash, credit card or money order, in person or via customer service representative. Customers must pay a reconnect fee. However, they have the option of adding the fee to their next bill. Billing adjustments and disputes, section ten and thirteen. Billing statement adjustments for overcharges and undercharges cannot be made after a period of one year from the date of the statement. The current policy allows up to three years, which covers multiple fiscal years. Situations where this can arise can include incorrect reading of the meter, incorrect application of the rate schedule, incorrect meter connection, or other similar reasons. Section eleven, broken pipe policy. What is the broken pipe policy? It allows customers with excess water use caused by a leak to receive a bill adjustment or credit upon proof of repair. Revision limits application of the broken pipe policy to residential customer meters only. Current policy applies to residential and commercial customers. The terms of the policy are now simplified and easier to understand. Under section fifteen, reconnect fees. The proposed document that we've provided allows the waiver of reconnect fees once every twelve months. Allows customers to request the reconnect fee to be billed on their next statement rather than paying the prior paying prior to your reconnection. Current policy, they are only allowed a waiver reconnect fee once per lifetime. We felt like that was not fair and once per year is more of a fair option. And then also reconnection fees, that was also a one time per lifetime. And now it's upon as they need it. It can roll ongoing to the next fee.
We do still have after hour fees?
Yes, and that would have to be paid. After four thirty, they would have to pay an after hour fee. And that's twenty-five dollars. Health of a resident, section seventeen point two. We are proposing and providing a one day extension in addition to the standard seven day grace period to customers who qualify the health of a resident designation. In addition to mailing the standard disconnection, the city will attempt to call the account holder prior to disconnection for non-payment. This courtesy procedure applies as long as the account qualified for the health of resident designation. This is something I'm very proud that we're going to do. This adds to my staff of what they're going to be doing. But if an account comes up for disconnection, they'll check to see if that customer is listed as a health of a resident on their account and they will contact that customer, let them know that they have twenty-four hours to either make a payment, come in to make a payment arrangement, or relocate the resident that's in danger. I think this is a huge benefit that we're offering to our customers. Lastly, we're removing the city's discretionary low delimeter option due to the incap- compatibility with our Autron meters. Return checks, E F T, A C H, section eighteen. If one of these payment methods fail, to clear the bank, the customer will be notified and the account will be subject to disconnection within fifteen days. Currently, the policy's ten. We're given additional five. Customers with more than three returned items will become a cash only account. Customers having items returned as a chargeback will place, will be placed on a cash only for a period of twelve months and a chargeback is a card payment that was disputed by the actual card holder. Section nineteen, collections. An unpaid final account balance will be transferred to the customer's active account within thirty days after the due date. If they've moved into one location, they relocate and the final bill for the prior location is not paid, we'll transfer that balance within thirty days to the new location. For those who did not relocate within the city, do not have an active account, accounts are forwarded to a collection agency within ninety days after the account becomes inactive. Once an account is transferred to collections, customers must coordinate payments or disputes within the collection agency directly. Customer issues and complaints, section twenty-one and twenty-two. Establishes clear expectations for responding to customer questions and or complaints. Representatives have forty-eight hours to resolve a customer's issue. If they need more time to resolve, they should attempt to notify the customer to explain the reason and provide a timeline for resolution. Lastly, the complaint escalation is defined clearly that the customer starts with the customer service representative. They can escalate to the supervisor. If not satisfied, they escalate to me as the customer service manager. If they're still not satisfied, it would escalate to the appropriate utility director. If it's trash, it would be Mr. Enos. Water would be Mr. Lewis. Electric would be Ms. Frank. From there, if it's not satisfied, and that would be a written complaint going to that director. If they're still not satisfied, it would escalate to the city manager who would hold the final resolution of the dispute. I'd like to thank all of you for your time and consideration of the approval for the changes that we've proposed.
Thank you. So before I open up questions for, I just want to thank the customer service department for where we've gone over the last decade. It used to be that it was a regular, as commissioners getting requests for help and stuff and it rarely would have those, or rarely do I have that. From where we've come, I want to thank you, thank you directly.
Thank you.
So with that being said, does the board have any questions or comments if I can?
I do have one. When you were talking about excessive boarding, what's the definition of excessive?
It depends on whether, Mr. Truman, if it's a commercial or if it's residential. And it's going to go on their usage because we can look to see if it goes up. You know, my usage would be maybe lower than yours. You may water flowers often. And so for, if mine goes up to what yours would be, we would contact you from that.
So we have an alert system. If it's a, a constant running of water, we know that that's a problem. Or if it's a excessive usage, we can look at that and see as well. But that would be unusual for any particular account. There's not really a certain number of gallons that would go through.
And we'll call the customer. We'll contact them. We have billing reports that we run and if it's escalated, we'll contact the customer and say, hey, is this unusual? And sometimes it's a thing that they're throwing up and they'll, you know, know exactly what it is and when that day.
In regards to U S Postal Service, it is not as dependable as it used to be. Do we have an electronic billing system where customers can receive electronic bills so that they know they received that on time and matter?
Yes, sir.
That's a easy, easy type of option.
Yes, and we rack them in, customer signing up for an online account and they can opt in for a text, they can opt in for an email. There's plenty of options that they.
I have another question. So if I have a citizen here, um, wants to do an online pay, they're in fact, they can take, but you know, they can deal with that personal line, not even calling on the phone?
They can do, they actually, it, it walks them through step by step. And the online pay will, it'll tell them and they can do it as a one time option or they can go in and, and say, I want to do it every month. But there's options and it's very simple. And if they have any questions, I always tell them to call our staff and they can log in and walk them step by step on how to do it.
And then on the broken pipe policy, removing commercial account. How do you see that? I mean, and what, what percentage of our broken pipe policy now residential versus commercial account?
I'm going to refer that to Mr. Lewis.
And maybe you have some budgetary concern in regards to.
Um, I don't have an exact percentage residential versus commercial. I would say that by volume, we stand to lose a lot more water through a commercial connection as the line size diameter of those lines is usually larger than residential. Residential is not going to be larger than a one inch line. It's the primary reason for designating us to residential only. It's a water conservation measure as well. Broken pipe, it's not something that's offered in every utility. A lot of utilities do not operate at all, so we just want to be more specific to helping those that we don't want to bear the brunt of a, you know, some, somewhat of an equitable burden which would be our residents.
And then Spalding County Water Authority allow us to do the same for them, or is?
They adopt our policy. They adopt our policy, and we apply the same to the Spalding County system for customers.
And on the broken pipe policy, if someone has an excessive bill, do we have built-in option for a payment plan? I think now we do. Does that continue in terms of allowing them to work through that process?
You were saying about other master meters. And an apartment complex that has sixty, seventy, eighty units. Is that's most of, it's a, it's a master meter that sends the water out to each customer? Okay, when you said that, when you have a, like a water leak, usually it does not, it goes to the master meter, not to the customer, to the each individual.
Yeah, so in that situation, that account is a commercial account.
Okay, so it's a commercial account. So how do, who charges the resident? Well, you know, how they, they bill for water or?
The apartment owner assess probably a flat rate typically to their resident, to their tenants. But we would bill just that through that master meter to one account.
So actually, the tenants are not paying us, paying us a deposit. It actually goes through the development. So your contract, our contract is not with the tenant, it's with the developer.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's part of why we added the provision related to additional deposits. That's why I stepped up, cuz I thought that was where you may be going. It is not useful in all apartment or multifamily settings, but we have recognized that there are situations where a, the owner of that apartment complex may not be paying their water bill, or they may have a leak and therefore are delayed or behind in paying that water bill. And in order to make sure that the, we are, we are accounting for that risk and having something on file so that the residents aren't the ones who are, who are having to deal with a disconnection, we can request now an additional deposit so that we can utilize that deposit.
But you're getting it from the development rather.
Correct, correct.
In actuality, a customer calling that has a problem with the utility bill, it wouldn't include the water?
No, if they were, if they were calling and it did not have to do with the utility, if it did not have to do with the, the electric may, for example, be in their name, they may have a complaint related to their, to electric or to solid waste or to the other services that are on their bill. But their water, if they are on a master meter, is billed exclusively to the apartment complex owner.
But the, the power is, goes to each individual unit rather than to the whole development.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions for board members? Thank you all for a great presentation. Moving into slide three, let's discuss proposed personnel policy revision. Human Resource Director Stephanie Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a hard copy because it is an eighty-nine-page policy. Would you all like a hard copy? Might be easier to read. Well, we went from a seventy-page personnel policy to an eighty-nine-page personnel policy. I'm not sure if that's good or bad, but we'll start with that. So I've been working on the personnel policy over the past few years. The last policy or the current policy in place was adopted on eleven twenty-six nineteen. We've had a lot happen since then. A lot of employment laws have changed. Different regulations have changed. We've also learned some things. We've had situations where something happened here at the city, maybe a situation with an employee, and it wasn't as clearly defined in the personnel policy how we would treat it. So we've been keeping a long list of stuff. We believe we are presenting a, a accurate policy that makes sense and is very clear. I did not write this all by myself. We had a lot of input from several folks that here at the city, besides Ms. O'Connor and our department directors, our employed, edit, our employee diversity and inclusion team had a say in the policy, and we've added some stuff that they wanted in there. And we also had a lot of comments from our employee advisory committee, which is what Ms. O'Connor chairs. And so they've read the entire policy. They came back with questions and wanted some clarification. So this has been an ongoing process all year. So I'm proud to present what we believe is a final product to you today. So the first handout that you have is a seven-page handout is really just a summary of the major changes to the personnel policy. Some of them you may be like, okay, not a big deal, but I want it to be as transparent as possible. So I'm really gonna work off of that handout. I'm on page one. Mr. Maxwell? You don't have it.
Is it not in the presentation folder?
It was. It is.
Go ahead, I'll forward it to him.
Okay, um, it is twenty-two articles. And so I've made comments for articles that didn't have a change, just so you would be aware. So the first article is introductions, and there were no, no significant changes, so nothing to really talk about there. Article two is our equal employment opportunity and nondiscrimination statement. Currently, it is well-defined and examples are given, however, how to lodge a complaint, and retaliation was not addressed in the current version. So in our proposal, we have outlined a complaint process, which is clearly defined with several different options on whom to go to. Retaliation is defined in the consequences of retaliating against someone, and addition of information on the city's employee diversity and inclusion team, which was not in the current version because we didn't have that in place at the time. So that has also been added, and we wanna make sure employees are aware that we do have that. Article three is recruitment and selection. We did not have any significant changes in this article. Article four was establishment of positions, and we did not have any significant changes there either. Article five, under general employment rules, we do have some changes. Currently, we allow reinstatement of an employee within a six-month period of the person leaving and returning. We seem to have a large pattern of that, employees that leave, thinking the grass is greener on the other side, and then come back, and it creates a real administrative nightmare with their pension plan and other things. So we wanna reduce that period to three months. So instead of six months, it's three months we'll reinstate. You know, that doesn't mean we won't hire you back. It just means we're not going to reinstate you, which would put you at your original hire date for purposes of vesting and your vacation accrual. So that's the difference.
Do we call our retirement and pension plan or retirement?
It is referred to both different ways. It is defined benefit plan according to the master document, but a lot of people refer to it as retirement plan or pension plan, so. The addition of information addressing what happens if an employee is rehired or reinstated, and what happens in regards to the pension plan. We've learned that a lot of folks may leave, they take the money out, the portion they paid in the pension plan, and then they wanna come back, and they assume they're reactivating pension plan, and it does not work that way. They have to pay that money back if they withdrew it. So there's a pretty complicated process to it, and it wasn't clearly defined in the personnel policy before, so we've added that in there.
Let me ask you.
Yes, ma'am.
Question. And I, I kind of talked just about this. In the past, okay, we, we have an employee, a lifer that's been with us for till retirement. And that person is getting ready to retire, and is led to believe that they have a full retirement benefits. But once they're gone, they've left, they will count, it's been calculated, once they have left. And we see that they were maybe short a few months of having a full retirement. They've already left. What is our solution for that?
Well, when someone approaches our office about retirement, and Rick Fox, that's all he does, is the pension plan. We advise them, you're so close to retirement. You realize if you leave today, you're walking away from your retirement. You only have a year left. We do our best to talk employees out of leaving and to make sure that they understand where they are as far as the vested portion. And some employees listen, and Heda and others don't. And just say, well, I'm done.
Okay, so whatever the confusion was, this employee left thinking, I'm fully vested and will get my full retirement. Nobody contacted that person. A few months later, she gets her, they get their first check and realize they're short a couple of hundred or whatever it is for their full retirement. They work for the city twenty-five, thirty, whatever the years were. What is our remedy? Obviously, someone that has worked in a high, a higher level position, understand that would not just walk away with a few months left. Once we realize that, from the city point, what is it that we do?
I have not had an employee reach out to me with that situation, so if it has occurred, it has not come to my knowledge. I do know that we do an estimate. Rick does it on the computer. It's a spreadsheet, and it's an estimate of this is what your retirement does look like or should look like. But that is not a guarantee. It's G M A who actually does the calculation and determines what the exact amount of that is. And sometimes there have been a few dollar discrepancies, but if there's been something, hundreds of dollars, I'm not aware of it. But I'll gladly look into it. The, I mean, the issue, I think the situation would be, we could try to get that person back so they could get the rest of the time, so they could get their full retirement. But there are cases where employees don't want to come back.
Yeah, I understand it. But we have employees that we have retired out rather than firing them, that gets full pension, everything. When we know, we know that they should have been fired instead of retired out. But then when you look at the other situation, we realize that. And we know that this, this person should have gotten or led to believe that they were fully vested and had the retirement. I'm having some issues with that.
I'm not aware of the situation, so I, I do not know what you're talking about, unfortunately. I do know that our pension plan is administered through G M A, and the rules are very strict and very tight about what constitutes retirement and the calculations. It's, it's different depending on years of service. So, and that's something that they handle for us as far as this.
And I, I understand that, but the, the breakdown was not with G M A, it was here. And I, and I.
Well, if you will enlighten me on that, I will be happy to look into it. But again, I'm not aware of it. I have not had any concerns come up about the pension plan and amounts being different. Okay, also, under general employment rules, currently, we have that apartment director may recommend a rate higher than the minimum pay rate, up to a maximum of ten percent for an employee coming in. The proposal has that as well, but we've developed a matrix which substantiates that, so that way we can always go back to the file and say, this is why this person came in more instead of this person. So it takes into account education, additional credentials that aren't necessarily required for the job, and extra certification. So we're, we're pretty proud of that, and we're already using that. On page two, currently probationary period really only addresses full-time employees, which is a, which is a concern. So we have broken that out to where probationary period has been broken out to make it clear that all new employees are in initial probationary period. And then other probationary periods are specifically detailed, such as promotion, disciplinary reinstatement. Other additions in this section, we have added in physical fitness for public safety employees, which has been added pursuant to Kalia standards and fire standards. We have added in temporarily performing different duties exemption, which states that the city manager has the authority to temporarily reassign exempt employees' primary duties and reclassify him in the case of an emergency, such as we had during the tornadoes. This is something we learned. This is a big one that our employees are gonna be very excited about when they realize it. We have added standby time, and this is the time that a non-exempt employee will be available after completing his or her regular work shift in which the employee is required to be on call, or I'm sorry, required to be available for callback to return to work in case of emergency or need. Currently, there is no compensation for standby, and this is something we hear a lot about on our exit surveys with employee leaving, that they're on call and not paid for it. So we are proposing to add eight dollars per day for each employee that serves standby time. These are not law enforcement or fire protection positions. This is other positions, water, water, wastewater, sanitation, those positions. Callback pay is in the, yes, ma'am?
Okay, when you said standby time, if, is that something added to their schedule that whoever has standby is already assigned and knows ahead of time?
Yes, ma'am.
So these are their normal working hours, or do, are they paid at a higher rate for when they're on standby?
When they're currently on standby now, they don't get anything. So standby is when they go home at five o'clock and they're done for the day, and then there's a water main break, and they have to come in. So someone in specific departments, for example, water department, is always on standby for when something like that happens. So then that person is expected to come back to work. So they are not compensated for standby time at all right now. However, they're, they have several restrictions. They have to be back to work within an hour, and it's a, I mean, it's kind of a burden for the employee. They get nothing for it. They just are expected to come back. They can't drink alcohol. There's a lot of things that they cannot do. So the standby time of adding eight dollars per day is just a monetary incentive to, to show appreciation and also to help them out, because we have some departments that are very low-staffed, and the same folks are having to do standby time every week, and most of them do it on a weekly basis, and they rotate it ahead of time. So it's really something meant to encourage our employees.
Okay, so if, uh, police officers are not.
No, ma'am.
They're overtime.
Correct.
Right, okay. So if, if they're off and something happens and they have to be called in, then they're paid.
They're paid overtime.
Rate of overtime.
Correct.
Okay, the standby is for a, a public work.
Correct.
Whoever.
Right.
In, in that department. It's standby scheduled in their schedule for a particular day of the month. They know that this particular day is my standby. I don't work in the daytime. This is, I'm gonna be at home waiting for them to call me.
Yes, ma'am.
So if they're not called, then they don't, they just get that, that day's pay.
They would just get the eight dollars for that day. If they get called, then they come back to work. They get paid their regular hours unless they hit overtime, and then they would be paid at their overtime rate.
Okay, I'm, I'm still not.
They're, they're still at work during the day, too. So these are the employees that are coming in at seven, seven-thirty, working till four, four-thirty. They're on standby that night when they go home. So they've already worked all day. They're still on standby that evening, so if a main breaks at one o'clock in the morning, they're coming back to work. So they're gonna get that eight hours per day. Even though they came to work, they're also gonna get an additional eight hours per day of their standby time. Then they will get paid when they come back in as well, a minimum of two hours. That's callback pay. So if they have to come in, they're going to get whatever their hourly rate should be for that time that they are here at a minimum of two hours. So if they come in and they have not worked their full regular time that week, they'll get regular hourly pay for the time that they come into work. If they have already worked that regular time, they will get overtime pay for that time that they come back. What we were not accounting for is if they don't come back, do they get anything because they had to wait to maybe come back? And we're adding that into the policy.
Okay, so when they come back, they're actually getting overtime?
It depends. If they've worked their normal forty-hour work week, then yes. If they haven't, then no, not until they work that forty hours. It may be that that forty hours is hit Thursday night because they've already, they're, they're four-ten, so they've already worked their forty hours. So when they come back Thursday night, because they got called back in, they'll get overtime. If they are paid hours five days a week, then they haven't worked forty hours yet on Thursday night, that will be regular pay. But when they come back on Friday, they will then be getting overtime if they've hit that forty hours. So anything over that, whether it's overnight, later in the not, not, not everybody, no. That's why it doesn't apply to police and fire. You have twenty-one eighty-four hours for police, and you have. That's why it doesn't apply to police and fire. You have twenty-one eighty-four hours for police and you have twenty-eight forty for fire, twenty-nine. So no, not everybody works forty hours a week and not everybody works. Eight hours a day, five days a week. That's why it gets very confusing and very hard to write a policy.
So if a police officer work, doesn't work a forty-hour work week, um, whether work a forty-hour work with them or not. When they they're called back in, they are, they get overtime, whether they work four hours or not.
They get oh, they get, they're on a per pay period basis of fourteen days. So a police officer gets overtime. After eighty-six hours in a fourteen-day pay period. And the pay period goes from Sunday to the following Saturday. So and that's, and I believe that's in here as a change sheet. It's under Fair Labor Standards specific to law enforcement and it's. And fire department is different as well. Theirs is on a twenty-eight day pay period basis and then they get overtime past that.
I'm still.
Think the overtime, it only starts after forty hours.
Depending on the employee and what department they are in. It starts after their regular amount of hours that they are supposed to work for that pay period. That's probably the easiest way to put it.
Whatever, start after.
Forty, forty. No, we don't have part, part-time, no, only full-time employees and full-time has to be forty hours.
So overtime starts after forty hours.
Depending on the employee.
If a person is a a on on call, a call. And they they're in the middle of their week work week. And they've only worked twenty-four hours. And they still have two, the other days to work. They won't get overtime. In the middle of the week.
They will not get overtime until they hit forty hours.
Okay, so if they come in and work whatever those hours were and then they work the rest of their week. They'll get the, they'll get overtime.
Yes, they'll likely hit overtime on either on Thursday or Friday. They'll hit it earlier.
I guess I got an unrelated question. Uh, I got a couple friends that are programs. And somebody works an eight-hour day, they're on call, how, how? How long they'll be, how long can or allow them to work? Under safety concerns, if they've been working from. Eight in the morning till whatever eight hours is, then they're on call. And they gotta go back down and work another six to eight hours. Is there, are there any employment law group against that?
Not that affect us since we're not governed by OSHA. However. Uh, certainly, we don't want that to be a practice, but I do know in case of tornadoes, there were some employees that worked twenty-four-hour shifts on. Before they ever were able to get rest, but we made it a habit to try to make sure that didn't happen often.
I, um, I, uh, I under- understand what you're saying about the standby time. And I, and but, and but I, I feel like that there could be a better remedy and I'll tell you why. Public Works and Solidway are the lowest-paid departments in the city. And I'm the, uh, police and private, I, they, whatever they get, they earn, they deserve. But I think that we have always. Not. Been equitably fair to public works or solidway. And even though. Uh, I understand what you're saying about the quarter hours. I think the way we we've looked at it. To me, it seems like. We're looking at them like they're less important or they don't deserve. That they work real, real, real hard. And if I get, if I'm outside standing over a ditch digging or whatever all day long. And I I I'm on call on a Wednesday and I'm called in and I'm not getting overtime. I'm just gonna get eight dollars. I think we need to look at that.
That that eight dollars is not, is, doesn't have anything to do when they get called in. When they get called in, they'll get their regularly, regular hourly rate, whatever that is.
Fourteen, thirteen, fourteen.
Yeah, it depends on the employee. The eight dollars is if you never get called in and you are sitting at home waiting to be, you're going to get eight dollars. Eight dollars that day because you are on standby. That's in addition to any time that you're working. It's not a lot, but it's a lot better than nothing. We're accounting for the fact that you are. You are having to to not do what you normally could do if you were not on standby. So eight dollars is only for standby time, doesn't have anything to do with you coming back in. So you will get your regularly hourly rate of pay or overtime depending on when you hit that overtime mark. The eight dollars is just in addition to that for every day that you're on standby.
I I I think my concern is this. If I'm, if I'm in the middle of a week, if I got a quarter hour work week and I've worked two days. And I'm on standby, you ca- you call me in. Why can't I get paid overtime for that?
The Fair Labor Standards Act won't allow that. You're gonna get overtime though for your Friday that you're just working your regular eight to five. So it's going to, you're just, it it's going to end up being the exact same on your paycheck. It's just that the hours that you're working in. More extenuating circumstances are not going to be the overtime. It's just gonna be your regular shift at the end of the week that will be overtime. So your paycheck's going to look exactly the same at the end of the week.
How many folks are on call?
Yeah, I don't understand that question. What's? No, no, we have people on call every single day. Just depends on the department, mm-hmm, every day. Street, stormwater, water wastewater, electric. Solid waste doesn't really use on-call, but they probably are gonna have to start. For the person on standby that day. Not everybody gets standby pay only for the day that they are on standby. The the calendar, they're scheduled. In their, if they sign up for a job, if they apply for a job in the city that has standby time, it will say in their job description, you are subject to standby. You're on call, however you wanna look at it.
And I I saying it, I understand what you're saying, but my concern is that if a police officer is called in over overtime, he gets overtime. It don't matter that he hadn't reached the mark.
He doesn't get overtime till after eighty-six hours.
Right, he's not on overtime until after that. No, not necessarily. It's the same thing. They only will hit that overtime after that eighty-six hours and fourteen days. At that point, they're just called back in with the exception of the next section, Detective Detail and K nine handler. But uh, all the other ones that are being called back are the same way. They do not get overtime until after their eighty-six hours for that fourteen-day pay period. There's clocking back in.
Okay, cool, okay. Okay, um, on page two, I'll go to E differential pay. Um, and this is specific to the police department. Um, this is detective detail pay and K nine handler pay and it's similar to the standby pay. This includes an additional one-hour pay for each day for those duly classified and fulfilling the task. So it's very similar to standby pay and we've been doing this all along. It just wasn't uh detailed clearly in the policy. Um, employee relationships have been clearly defined and what the expectations are for such. And the last one under their um expectations on parking and solicitations have been defined. Article six is use of city assets. Um, in the current policy, this really only addresses city vehicles. So in our revision, it covers all city assets uh with expectations and consequences thereof. Article seven, our drug and alcohol policy, um, we realized this was and could be a potential issue. Um, so we have added to the policy regarding prescription drug use and the expectations of employees using prescription drugs. So you know, we address a lot about illegal drugs, just never said anything about prescription drugs. So obviously, if you're on prescription, prescription drugs. We've got to make sure that you can still do the job. Um, and that's not affecting your uh ability to do that. On page three, safe workplace, uh, this is article eight. And currently it is a one-page addressing prohibited conduct, reporting procedures, enforcement, workplace searches. Um, in this proposal, we have three pages that includes more topics and detail on the above. We have also added additions of defining workplace violence, including domestic violence, possession of firearms. And city expectations of targeted employees. Fortunately, we have not had an issue. Um, about this, but we did think that we needed to be prudent and put something in our policy about it. Um, article nine, travel expenses and reimbursements. We did not have any significant changes. Article ten is travel expenses. Um, we raised the meal reimbursement amounts by five dollars for breakfast. Uh, ten dollars for lunch and ten dollars for dinner. And that's just because you just about can't buy ten dollars for breakfast. So uh, we thought those amounts were fair. Article eleven payroll, um, this, this is a new proposal of something that would be in, go in here. And um, this is the addition of payroll fees. This is pursuant to OCGA eighteen-four fourteen. That there's a one-time fee of fifty dollars or ten percent of the amount paid into court on behalf of an employee for child support payments. Excuse me. The fee will be charged against an employee's income as reimbursement for the city's administrative cost. In addition, pursuant to OCGA nineteen-eleven-twenty-D, there will be a twenty-five-dollar fee against an employee's income. As reimbursement for the city's administrative costs for each initial income deduction, such as a garnishment and three dollars for each deduction thereafter. Um, this is a. Very um, high administrative burden, which takes hours per garnishment. And puts us in right in the middle of a creditor and an employee. And sometimes we may have to go to court for something to fight it. It's, it is Georgia law that you can charge for this. I know this is a really big change. We currently have twenty-three employees that have a garnishment. And I think we have about, I think we have fifteen that have child support orders. And so when that is the case, there's all sorts of. Um, additional paperwork we have to send to the courts and do on our end. So the purpose of this is to help us recover some of that administrative fee. Cause it's not covered anywhere.
I I'm of that right there. I've never. For us to. Part that comes with um, the workforce. Um, having to do some of these things to help people out to make sure that the paperwork is done. And now they're already having to pay out and that we're going to, because we can. Um, add even more expense to again, take another additional. Or 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 lady twenty-five dollars from that person to mean that. I don't, I don't, I guess the easy way to say, I don't like that. I don't, I don't think that's, I don't know if word fair is to be used, but. But just because we have to fill out paperwork, we we're going to charge somebody twenty-five dollars. Um. To have the punishment and these people who are more like being garnished. Or on this child support problem, some of our war pay, not employees. I would just, I I, I don't like that at all. And I'm, I mean, I'm one of seven. But it's one of the many in this room that I just, whenever I see something and and we use the. Not gonna say the excuse, we we use the phrase because we can. I just don't. I I would wanna be.
I don't think it has anything to do with because we can. I think it's because we have, well, the law says that we can. It doesn't mean we're doing it because we can. We're doing it because it is an administrative expense that has, is, is to. Forty-one people when the majority of our taxpayers are paying for that. Is it fair for, for those that don't have garnishments or child support? To have to pay for human resources time in, in that one individual's financial. Issues. I don't know. That's up to y'all.
I hear what you're saying, what you're saying about taxing money. I understand what Rodney's saying. These are probably some people that are really not making a whole lot of money anyway. We are paid a whole lot more for local level stuff. That we had to deal with than this, than probably all of it, all of them together. One calculator add up to some, somewhere we just spent it on, on one person.
Okay, so would y'all like us to remove it and not charge it?
I I would.
Okay.
Well, and I I can confirm, it's not just low-level employees that 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 have this.
I I would be in favor of. Charge at some point twenty, twenty-five dollars because. If if you hire someone to to work on your, and and like, like, so kind of says, the law allows you to do this. You you hire somebody to work for you, they run into some hard times. You're, you're going to power only a part of time by having additional, because you're having to do some additional work. Or someone's having to spend some time to, to do something additional. I just, I I'm, I'm just not in, I'm, I'm not in favor. I I just don't.
I understand, but just to give you an idea, um, we spend approximately ten hours every single week just on garnishment and child supports. So I mean, that's, that's something that my staff just have to, has to absorb and we don't have the capacity for it. Um, I mean, it's, it's that big of a deal where I almost need a part-time person to just help with that. Cause it, it, it is so time-consuming and there's so many legalities about it. If we do something wrong, then we as the city are in trouble. So, um, I mean, I I I understand completely. I'm just trying to give you an idea of how significant of time it really is for us.
I mean, I I understand with the, you know, same thing with open records. I mean, it's, it can be part of, it can be time consuming.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I've dealt with garnishments on my employees and bankruptcies and tax liens and it's a pain to tell, but. It's also the value of employing me is hard enough that they gotta deal with, so. I can, um. What Mr. McCord position on this?
Okay, let's remove eleven point six, make that change for this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
So it'll go eleven, WT will go to eleven point six and recovery of wages improperly paid eleven point seven.
Okay. Um, article twelve separation, we do have no significant changes there. Um, so bulk of the changes are in this next session, section, which is um, article thirteen, attendance and leave. Um. We have added in what is required by law to enable breastfeeding employees the opportunity to express milk during their work hours. And that's a um requirement through Georgia code we've added in. We are proposing to change the schedule of vacation time. Um, to where it, um, someone's accrual rate will go up after five years of service. Instead of six years of service and then the next accrual will go up after ten years of service. Um. I'm sorry, I'm looking at, it's, I'm sorry, it's separated out separately because it is different for fire suppression. So on that first page three, I have what it currently is for full-time reg, full-time employees. And then also have fire suppression on there. And the next page has what the proposal is, which is in essence, getting the accrual rate. Um, higher after one less year of service. And so we think this is a benefit to employees and will help with, hopefully help with retention. So, and we see that with their workforce coming in today. It's all about how much vacation time do I get? So that's one of our measures with that. On page four. Um, we are also proposing to raise the sick leave accrual rate. It is currently two-point-one-five. For most employees, it is different for fire suppression. They're six-point-four-six. Uh, hours bi-weekly and we are proposing to raise that to where employees would go to three-point-one-oh bi-weekly. Um, so almost a whole extra hour bi-weekly and fire suppression would go to nine-point-two-five. So they're looking at an extra almost three hours. So we believe that's a um, a a great thing for our employees and um, our revision a few years ago decreased it. And so we're trying to get it back to where it was. Currently, um, donations are for sick leave. We, we do allow employee donations, um, but they are stated to be for severe sickness of the employee. And the employee must not work for three weeks to be on qualified family medical leave. And most of this does apply to family medical leave. This gets us into a, a question a lot of times where an employee says, hey, I'm. Why can't you get donations for me? I have a severe illness. So we are defining what that means. And that is a life-threatening accident or illness includes the following advanced or rapidly growing cancers. Acute serious illnesses or injuries with potential of loss of life and chronic conditions involving failure of bodily organs or systems. We are recommending that uh, we move the three-week requirement to only two weeks. And then of course, the employee does have to either be on qualified family medical leave. And if they're not eligible for that, they have to be on approved uh, leave of absence. So we're just trying to tidy up family medical leave. Um, an employee that is sick, and this is something new, employee that is sick but does not qualify as a severe sickness as defined above, may receive unsolicited sick donations from fellow employees. And we've had a lot of employees reach out and say, hey, you know, he's had shoulder surgery and, you know, I want to donate some of my time to him. So it doesn't necessarily qualify a serious health condition. But we appreciate the fact that our employees are being generous and wanting to, you know, support their employees. And a lot of times it's supervisors doing that. So we thought it was important to add that. We are adding in though, that upon an employee's return to work, any unused donations that were given to an employee are forfeited from that employee once they return to work. And then it's going to be placed into a donated sick leave bank that we can use for future employees. Um, we're still kind of working out the plan on how we're going to do that sick bank, but, um, um, I think that's a, a great thing for us that to move towards. With that being said, we are eliminating, uh, the annual sick leave bonus. There's a sick leave bonus currently in place. You can get up to five hundred dollars for, um, perfect attendance and two hundred fifty dollars if you only missed a few hours. And so we would be removing that this year because we feel like we're making up for it by raising the sick accrual rate, um, and that benefits more employees. We did just pay that out for this year. So, um, it would, we would not do it next year.
No, not sick leave, just vacation.
Okay, um.
When you, um, you say this was, was the group effort coming up with this? What, what was the the move, the, what, what did the employees think of not getting the five hundred dollars? Increasing this sick, uh, pool. Was it a more than one, the five hundred and two fifty? Or this was more wanted, this more sick leave with pool?
As a whole, people wanted the sick accrual to go up. But I, we did have two departments who weren't real happy about or hated to see the sick leave bonus go because it's, it's typically their employees who get the bonus. So they were it was the electric department and fire department.
They did, they, 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 they appreciated the pound in the holder.
They did. And it's typically their staff that get it. So it was, um, I wouldn't say they wanted it in place of it, but they hated to see it go. But I think once it was discussed, they understood, well, we are getting higher accrual. And if you take that into equation, you're doing better getting the higher accrual than the sick bonus. Okay, um, I'm still on page four. Um, proposal towards the bottom to change the current policy to where holiday pays is included for purposes of overtime. Um, that is a proposal in there as well. And we are currently doing that now. Um, that's not for law enforcement or fire suppression. It's just for, uh, non-exempt employees and other departments. And that's made a big, big difference on the route. All right, currently is also in there. And this is a big change that I think our employees will be excited about. Currently, it states that inclement weather states that essential personnel to report to work as due. Um, and the proposal is that the addition of non-exempt personnel that support the essential services for the public good regarding the health and welfare of citizens and customers shall report to work as regularly scheduled and as directed by their department manager, director, manager, and the event city offices are closed. And in that case, such personnel would be compensated at twice his or her regularly our, regular hourly rate of pay. And we just think that's fair.
This is something we learned from our consultant during the tornado event that most cities have in place. I think the county did, it's one of the counties. Um, and we did not. So we, we wanted to be more consistent with what others do when we're having, if the city shut down and offices were closed, but I'm still asking you to come to work. You deserve a little bit more than your regular pay. So that's what that's for.
Yes, correct. Okay, page five. Um, we also have a proposal of an additional policy over measures the city will take during extreme heat to ensure the safety of our employees. Um, an addition of a policy over natural disaster, which states in the event of city offices closing, the, the addition of non-exempt personnel that support services for the public good um, shall report to work as regularly scheduled and direct about a department director manager. Um, such personnel will be compensated twice his or her regular hourly rate of pay. Same thing that we talked about. They commit weather with natural disaster. I just hope we never have one, but we learn last anything can happen. Um, we've also added in here a policy pursuant to the new legal regulations regarding the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act and Pregnancy Discrimination Act. And we have adds, added some additions to our family medical leave policy. Um, and our employees are doing a great job understanding this law, um, that we did need to make a few, um, stipulations in here. So, uh, one of those is with vaginal delivery, an employee may only use two weeks of his or her own sick leave if he or she is not the laborer. For cesarean or other complicated birth, an employee may only use up to four weeks of his or her sick leave if he or she is not the laborer. We want the spouse to be able to spend time with their wife at home, but we do have to have a limit there. Um, so that's what that is for. All other time off must be vacation leave or it will be unpaid. They can obviously get up to twelve weeks off because that's what the law allows under family medical leave. They just may not be paid for that time if they don't have it. Um, and we do have, if, if an employee cannot medically return to work at the end of the family medical leave period, yet they still have sick and vacation to lose, they will remain an active employee under the terms of leave of absence, family medical leave exhausted, um, as defined in this particular section until the sooner or one of the following occurs. And we have had this happen to a couple of employees to where their sick bank was much larger or remaining than the twelve weeks of family medical leave. And it got us in a pickle because we couldn't replace those positions. And we had someone out for a year that really affected one of our departments. So this is, um, why we've defined it that way. We also have it that employee absent from work on family medical leave because of his or her own serious health condition, but who otherwise performs so similar work elsewhere to his or her job duties, um, with the city would be considered, uh, dishonest behavior. So if you can't do the job here, you don't need to be doing the job somewhere else. And so we've, um, made that very clear as well. Um, and we've stated that employee absent from work to care for a spouse, child, or parent with a serious health condition, but who otherwise performs any work elsewhere during such period of time, uh, will be considered to constitute dishonest behavior. And unfortunately, we have, have had cases of that. Um, so we've got someone out, we're paying for sick leave and they're working somewhere else. So we've tried to tidy that up and make it clear what is allowed and what isn't. We've added
So and I'm, I'm not trying to be picky here. I'm just trying to understand. So if I got a uh, along with working for the city. And I, I got a, um, a lot more business. I got a computer repair business. If I'd say leave to be with my wife because I have accrued leave that, uh, that I work for the city, I've earned it or given this, whatever the case may be. And during that time that I'm out, if I'm working on a computer or cutting somebody's grass, that's considered to be I, what, what's working?
Similar.
I mean, what, what, what's, what's working?
Uh, dishonest, dishonest behavior within aspect of employment.
So if I, if I work for public works and we cut right away, I got my own lawn hair service. My wife had a baby. I'm at home. And I have time to go cut a yard. And the city knows about that. We don't consider that to be disloyal.
We are because we're paying you sick time to be out of work, to be at home taking care of your wife. And you're making money on the other side doing the exact same thing. That, but yet you're saying you can't do it here.
I, I don't think, I don't think that employees saying they can't do it here, think they're using their time.
And being paid sick time.
They're using their time to be with their spouse. And so that we're, we're
Are they with their spouse if they're working another job?
Say that again?
Are they with their spouse if they're working another job?
I, I don't think, I don't think you and I, well, I, I was speaking of me working, I was actually consulting or saying what being with my spouse is because I'm, I'm working another job. If I'm at home, if I'm available, if I'm out cutting grass and my wife needs me, and I can leave and go take care of my wife, then I think that's taking care of my wife. Um, you know, you may see it if, if I'm at cutting grass. And if I'm not by my wife's side for all day long or half day long, but whatever. And somebody else's ass. To me, I, I don't know how we govern, um, how we
I, I don't have a problem removing the word dishonest if that's the concern. But I agree with this recommendation and it is staff's recommendation because we have had issues where people are working at home. Yet we are paying sick leave and we are having to compensate probably overtime for somebody else to come in and fill that role. But they're doing the exact same thing at home. So I'm very, very passionate about that one. If dishonest is the one that we don't like, then we can remove that word. But, but this is a big problem that we are trying to address.
But again, if, if I, if, if, if I've worked at home from my computer and I'm, I'm not out cutting grass, I'm, I'm doing, I'm selling things online.
That's fine. That's not your job here. If, if that were your job here to work at, to work on your computer selling things, you need to come to work and sell things. If it, if it's you're outside cutting grass all day at work, but you can't do that because of whatever the sickness is that you have, then you, you can't do that at home either on your own time.
It pertains to the family medical leave.
It does, and abuse of sick, of sick time, sick pay. But, and, and that's different there. I mean, it's an employee absent because of his or own serious health, health condition who otherwise performs similar work elsewhere. There, you've got that. And then you've got the other one. If you're absent from work, caring for a spouse, child, or parent, and you're working anywhere elsewhere. Um, I mean, two different criteria there. And we have had issues with both. Yes, sir. Okay, we have added into the policy, the addition of voting leave requirements pursuant to state law. It wasn't in there before. Um, we have changed bereavement leave to, um, and cover more people. And this is a, a big topic to a lot of our employees. Um, so in addition to immediate family, which is, is described as the spouse, child, parent, uh, we've extended that to include parent loss, sibling, half sibling. Um, you can see that list of names there and we'll be granting them three regular working shifts for all employees. Uh, with the exception of fire person, fire suppression personnel who would receive two um, twenty-four hour shifts with pay per incident. And this was a big deal to our employees. So we're happy to present that. Uh, we have added in pursuant to state law, military leave, that every public officer employee has to be paid his or her salary. Um, up to a toll of eighteen days in one federal fiscal year. If they are called up to, uh, military leave, training, et cetera. And that's state law. It just was not in the policy. On page six, uh, the last thing, we have added the addition of policy over leave of absence and leave of absence F M L exhausted. What happens when you've exhausted your family medical leave and you can't return to work? Under article fourteen, investigation of employee misconduct, administrative leave, we've added some additional expectations regarding administrative leave such as you. We already had you must be available by phone, by phone, but we had some other criteria. You cannot wear your badge. You've, uh, we just tried to clear that and make it very clear. Under disciplinary actions, we did add some things under this section. Um, there's a list of items. There's about fifty items there of things that are subject to disciplinary action. And we've added these, which we thought are very important. And one of them is numerous or very costly at-fall accidents or injuries that involve city property and or occur on city work time. And we made a note here that any at-fall accident or injury with monetary damages or claims in excess of one thousand dollars or two or more at-fall accidents or injuries will resort in an automatic written reprimand. So that's something we'll have to be, um, teaching our managers, make sure they're on top of. We also added failure to fulfill duties as required by standby or detective detail, uh, receiving any city service without paying for it, scavenging items, misuse of information derived from the Georgia Crime Information Center or the Criminal Justice Information System Network. We've added in negligent supervision. We've added in harassment or retaliation either off or on duty, conduct either off duty or on duty that could contribute to a hostile work environment on the basis of any status as protected by law. And we've added an ongoing pattern of a negative mindset or hostile behavior that stems from an uncooperative or superior attitude. Um, under that section, we have also added in the purpose and details of a performance improvement plan. We use them now. It's just not addressed in the current policy. And currently, the Personnel Review Board consists of a pool of nine members and up to three alternate members. We are reducing that size um, to a pool of six members. We've also, uh, removal of oral warning under disciplinary actions or disciplinary notice either indicates a written warning or a written reprimand. And we've been using this form for quite some time. Article sixteen is grievance. And we have some additions to what is not eligible to be grieved in that section. It is also stated that an issue regarding an employee being unlawfully discriminated or retaliated against is not a grievance, but rather a complaint. And under article two, so they'll go to the right, uh, person to complain. And there's a different list of folks they can go to. And we've also added in the process allows for steps to be skipped, given the situation thereby. The matter can go to the attention of someone else up the chain with absolutely no involvement. So we just want to make sure if you were having a situation with your supervisor or your department director, that you, you could go, uh, above them. Um, because obviously it's going to be hard to confront your department director. You're being harassed. So, uh, we did define some steps there. Under article seventeen, career planning and professional de- development, we added in that we have new employee orientation each month. And we've also revised our process on career planning and how we'll be doing that with employees. Um, the next three articles, uh, Ms. Kelsey Carden will address. Um, the first one is article eighteen, employee privacy in the workplace.
Hello, everyone. So these next three articles actually work very much hand in hand. Um, I, unfortunately, the it reads more like legalese than I think the rest of this policy does. Uh, so I do want to make a blanket statement that if employees do have questions related to the policy, um, uh, these three sections in particular, uh, to please contact H R, um. These are very fact-intensive circumstances as we've learned over the last year, um, and as we've learned nationwide. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind that there, um, while there are a few hard and fast rules that are inside these three sections, um, more often than not, they lend themselves to a full legal review. Um, and in, in my opinion, as an attorney is, they're, they're my worst nightmare. Uh, so the first is article eighteen, employee privacy in the workplace. Uh, this does include three provisions in particular. Uh, the first is data privacy. The second is physical resource privacy. And the third is photo and video content. The main thing that we're wanting to get across with this section, despite it being very long, is that electronic and physical resources provided by the city to employees, volunteers, interns, and or contractors are not to be considered private. Um, an example that I would, you know, like to keep in, yes.
Did you mean consent?
Oh, yes. It, it went, uh, video, yes, photo and video consent. I apologize. Yes. So, um, a good example for, um, something to keep in mind is, you know, if we have an employee who is starting, they are being given uh, a computer, they are being given an email account. Um, those things are covered in our acceptable use policy. I T went through, um, a, a full review and revised a, a very comprehensive document that, uh, our employees are required to sign. But we also realized that we weren't necessarily covering things outside of vehicles. For example, um, you have a desk, you have an office, you are provided a key which allows you to lock those things. Uh, just because you have a key does not mean that it is your property and it does not mean that you have a privacy to what is inside of it. Um, there are limitations to that at such as, um, you know, if there are circumstances where if we are searching for the purposes of, um, going through your, you know, your personal purse, which is inside a cabinet or a locker that is locked. That is a very different scenario than opening up the locker and being able to visibly see in plain sight something that is in violation of our policy or in violation of the law. Um, so that, that section was primarily intended for that purpose. We also, uh, are doing in light of, of the, the great social media work that, uh, Danielle has been doing to advance our personal brand. Uh, we added a photo and video consent that is by default for all employees when they start working here. If they would like to opt out for whatever reason, they need to contact H R to be able to make that request. The next, or in article nineteen is the acceptable use policy. As I mentioned, this is primarily an I T document. Um, it is something that was never put into the personnel policy in the past, but it was a separate document that when you were doing your onboarding process, you were required to review and sign. Uh, so that has been reviewed. It has been cleared of anything that is not I T related for the most part, uh, and then incorporated into the policy itself. But you still will have the employee need to, to review and sign. It is essentially them saying that I agree that I'm using a City of Griffin email. I agree that I may uh, have access to City of Griffin technology equipment, uh, and these are the except uh, and these are the acceptable methods in which I can use it. And finally, my least favorite is our section for social media, article 20. So I want to clarify and start off by saying that this is one of the most complex areas of law that the United States currently has right now, uh, it, it, the world actually, and it will continue to evolve. So this policy has been drafted so that we can use it as a, an application tool for assess, assessing very fact intensive situations. Um, so I do want to, to be clear that it is not intended to limit anyone's First Amendment rights. Um, it, it is intended to be a document for internal use. It is not intended for a third party or citizen to be able to u, use this policy against a uh, particular employee or to utilize this policy against the City of Griffin. This is for internal disciplinary action and for us to be able to assess whether or not our employees' use of social media is interrupting our operations. And that is the key cornerstone of, of any social media analysis when it comes to employment. Uh, it is further complicated by the fact that we are a public entity, we are not a private corporation. You, our employees have First Amendment rights that we do have to respect, uh, but the employees also have to respect that we have to operate efficiently, and we have a vested interest in operating efficiently, and these rules are intended to provide a guideline. And when in doubt, the employee should contact human resources, uh, in order to determine whether or not their use of social media could in fact, uh, hinder operations. Um, it does imply to, apply to all employees regardless of whether or not that social media activity is e, inside or outside employment, whether or not they've done it while on the clock or whether or not they've done it off the clock. You are still an employee, we encourage people to disclaim and, and, and make clear uh, that their statements that they are making on social media are not necessarily the views of the city. However, a disclaimer should not be viewed as a loophole that will automatically allow that employee to get out from under the public's perception that they do speak with the authority of the city. Um, except as, except whereas authorized by the city managers, um, they are, employees are expressly prohibited from directly or indirectly identifying themselves as, uh, representing or speaking on behalf of the city. Um, you will see in, uh, hopefully soon, uh, or I'm, we're, we're working internally on an internal, uh, social media policy as well that we will be implementing that is specific to our City of Griffin social media accounts. Um, those will be governed, uh, a little bit differently, a, a little bit more specific, because they are our accounts. Uh, and the employees who have access to them will be required to agree to more restrictive use of those accounts than they would be compared to their own because it is not for their personal use, it is for representing the city. Do you have any questions about those policies specifically?
Any questions for board members? Very important. I do have a question, well, surely. No, it's really. What do we do, our employees opportunity to contribute to a 457 or health savings account?
Do we give them an opportunity?
Yep.
Yes, sir, we have a 457B.
What about a health savings?
Um, we no longer have a health savings account. We had, we did have it up until two years ago, uh, but we don't have to have savings account anymore. Um, the reason why is because with our high deductible health plan, you cannot have a H S A. So it's the way that the, our medical insurance is.
But we do have a flexible spending account.
But we do have a flexible spending account.
Yes, that has used in that kind of time table, well-
Yes.
Health savings account, tax deferred, deducted, or tax deferred for medical things of that nature for-
Right. And, and we've had it for years, um, but we lowered the deductibles and because we were paying so much for the H S A, and then we lowered the deductibles to, to offset it. Um, so it's, I hate to say it's a wash, but, um, a lot of our folks didn't understand it, it's quite confusing.
Well, you got a $25 deductible right now for standard, and $50 for a specialist.
Mm-hmm.
So health savings account, you contribute that, you don't pay taxes on that.
Correct.
So, but employees can go to a financial advisor.
Uh, employee can get one, I don't, right, they can get one on their own. Uh, they just can't get one through the city with the benefit plans that we currently have in place. We can certainly relook at it, at our renewal.
Yes, you do, it's possible. So I guess, they don't, they're not paying tax on that money.
Right, right. Right, and we do have the F S A for both medical expenses and for dependent care expenses, and that's a, that's a big deal too. But unfortunately, we don't have that many employees that take advantage of it either.
Well, if you have your, uh, your benefit to be with your employees, do you explain that?
We do, we do, but our employees aren't real good to show up for that either, unfortunately. So.
Any other questions?
I have two more articles, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Um, article 21, employee recognition, we've added in here our quarterly connector award. I believe you've heard us talk about that before, but we just want to make sure employees are aware that we have that. And then article 22nd is just im- implementation, no significant changes. Again, we are, um, wanting to implement this on January 1st, and that's because some things are tied to the payroll system, and so, uh, that's why we're trying to make it with effective date, January the 1st. That's all I have, any questions?
Two quick comments, one, just thank you to Ms. Woods. Also, there are several members of Edit and the Griffin Employee Advisory Council here, and they worked very hard on this for the last several months, so a big thank you to them. I've, I've learned a lot from them, um, and their points of view. And I think they've learned a lot from each other, because although it may be beneficial for one department, they've heard what has happened in other departments and see sort of a different side of things. So both of those, um, committees have been a huge help to me individually, but I think to the city as a whole. Um, and then also this will be on the agenda for a vote tonight. We will have the, um, section removed for you to be able to vote on that with that one section removed.
Moving into line four, considering taking session, pursuant to C T A section 54, bringing one B for the purpose of utilizing your presentation purpose, disposed, willing, properly, which are the, the, the C T A second, fifth, and fourth, and the, the, for the purpose of discussing, delivering, and body, employment, conference.